Otherwise, they would have been stacking them up.
There's no problem with that, I think. He just said, just to do that one and he'll come, Dana will come next meeting. But it's pretty non-controversial and they redid it.
Ryan, explain.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
I just didn't know, they sounded like there were two options, so it's good to know which option might be. Uh, no, I'm good. I have a staff.
All right. Is everybody ready?
Yeah.
No? You'll catch him. We're going to call this meeting to order. This is the Morgantown City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting for Tuesday, February 28th. The time is 7:05 PM and we are in the Mon County Commission Chambers. As a note, Committee of the Whole Meetings of Morgantown City Council are intended to provide an opportunity to receive information, ask questions, and identify policy options in an informal setting, and no official action will be taken at this meeting. We have the following matters scheduled this evening. Number one on our agenda, we have a few presentations, first being the sidewalk and paving project plan.
Didn't know if that was the cue to come up or not.
There you go, you're up.
Keep going. So, yes. We presented a few months back on sidewalk proposal. And so we wanted to kind of present again, kind of give you an update on where we're at. You know, how we're moving forward. Since that, we've gone through the process of hiring several on-call engineers. We've been working right now with one of those on-call engineers for a scope for our sidewalk plan. We'll do the sidewalk plan first, then we'll do paving. We're working with them. Kim Lee Horn is our consultant group that we're going to be working with. They've given us kind of a few options and Drew's going to go through those here for you to kind of give you an update on that.
Well, as my esteemed boss, Damian Davis, professional engineer, Director of Public Works and Engineering Department, said, "My name is Drew Gatlin. I am the staff engineer for the city." And I am talking to you tonight about the paving, pedestrian protection, and paving project plans, otherwise known as the PPPP. You may remember in October, Committee of the Whole Meeting, that I presented to you the status of our 2020 regional bicycle and pedestrian plan, right? The one that was supposed to be sort of, here you go, start building stuff. And I mentioned to you that it was over $100 million in plans of 2019 estimates. And indeed, that it was a combination of bicycle and pedestrian improvement projects, right? Not that those things are mutually exclusive, but you all wanted to focus on sidewalks, and that's cool, too. So I brought to you the, kind of the summary of Morgantown's network. Morgantown being Morgantown, city Morgantown, right? Not Greater Morgantown. And I showed to you various sidewalks that we had built over the past couple decades, trying to prove to you all that we can spend money, that we can build sidewalks, that we can do good things if you give us millions of dollars. And I presented to you all, you know, kind of this, this kind of first-year kickoff, let's do a big two-and-a-half-million-dollar kind of thing, right? This build, plan, design, evaluate structure. Today, I'm going to talk to you mostly about the planning and design portion of that. I understand finances are tight this year, so we're going to back off from the aggressive one-and-a-half-million-dollar building of these four sidewalk projects. They're still there. If you want to find them, we can do them. They're pretty easy to build, but we're not going to talk about it today. As Damian mentioned, Kim Lee Horn is our current likely-chosen consultant for this planning and design. Maybe slight evaluation part of the sidewalk project. Couple weeks ago, they gave us this chart. You can't read it. You're not supposed to read it. Anyway, this chart basically gives us high, medium, and low-cost options for various phases of this process, right? And bolded, you might be able to see that some sections are bolded and others are not. Basically, today, I am going to, you know, talk to you about kind of where we think we're going to go in terms of the high, medium, and low costs on these various options. And, you know, of course, I didn't take this at face value. I said, hey, like, let's eliminate Phase Two and combine it over here and add it over here. And anyway, I think we can do this one out of phase, and I really like what you're doing with these project risks. Anyway, Phase One, we are looking at an existing conditions assessment. I told you, right, the data set that we had, that the NPO's plan was built on, right? There's a little bit of anomalies, right? Sidewalks being in the middle of, shown being in the middle of nowhere, right? That don't actually exist, and other things that do exist not being shown there. So we really want to make sure that we have a good understanding of what is out there. The NPO's plan didn't just, you know, have faulty data that it was beginning with. It had a different scope and nature, right? It was really a high-level, sort of order-of-magnitude identification. We want to get down into the nitty-gritty. And so we are recommending the medium slash high-cost option here for this existing conditions assessment. City of Wheeling, City of Durham, right? Lots of comparable, sort of, not comparing us to Wheeling too much, but, you know, a lot of cities recently have begun to look very in detail about what their sidewalk networks look like, right? We think we can get this done this spring, right, and into the summer. We're going to be using a mixture of qualitative and quantitative measures, right? So kind of expert judgment, is the sidewalk in good condition? Is it accessible, right? Can we build this detailed understanding of risks, right? And hazards and conditions into our asset management program? Phase Two, also high-cost option, although less in cost than Phase One, right? So we are looking at identifying the projects, right? What do we need to do to get our nicely-connected network? And how are we going to prioritize? We also can begin this in the summer and the fall of 2023. Maybe we'll do some demonstration projects in the neighborhoods, as we've talked about for a long time, in the Traffic Commission, to help generate, right, you know, some momentum here. And certainly using lots of stakeholder meetings, engaging with the PED Board, engaging with the, you know, the PED Rapid Response Group, and engaging with people that build these things, right? And doing our gap analysis, right? Phase Three, we will then develop this five- and 10-year capital plan, also looking at this high-cost option. You may think that if we've identified the projects, it'd be a relatively easy thing to just cost them out, right? But really, I think one of the things that Kim Lee Horn and some of these other consultants we've been talking to are bringing to the table, we think we can get this done by the end of fall 2023, would be these more detailed project cost estimates, particularly including, like, an idea of, is this a risky project or not? Not a risk assessment, are you going to trip? But is this project going to be complicated, right? Is it on DOH right-of-way? Is it, is it going to require a bunch of retaining walls? Is it near other deficiencies in the network, right? Also, this is where we will likely, although I think we can do this really out of sync with the rest of it, where we will really dive into the funding and financing strategies, right, for this. It's probably going to be a 40 to 50-million-dollar plan. It's just, you can't really get away from it. We're going to be looking at levies. We're going to be looking at public crews and private crews, right? We're going to be looking at our favorite question, who should be responsible for the sidewalks, right? And then we're going to be moving into Phase Four, right? Which I spoke in October, right? The importance of having sort of a leapfrogging strategy where you are designing projects to have on the bookshelf that you can just build the next year, right? So really, we want to get a significant portion of whatever funds that we have this year that are allocated to this, helping us to get a head start on next year. Yeah, so anyway, that's going to vary, dependent on project complexity, some of those risks that we mentioned, right? Where is the money coming from? Sometimes certain monies require significantly more expensive procedures. And now, we're going to be talking about the paving plan. You're not up yet.
Okay.
So I will bring Damian up in just a moment to talk about North High Street, which is an interesting prospect for us, in which I hope you will give us the blessing to do. Anyhow, you will see a large spreadsheet in front of you. That is the current about 19 miles of street that we are looking at. I'm not saying we're going to be paving 19 miles of street this year. You can't really see it here, but right there are the various streets depicted on a map in Suncrest, Evansdale, Sunnyside, and Wilds Hill. We're going to choose 10 to 11 miles of streets, like we did last year, about 10% of our network. We think we can get it done in the same budget. And right now, the only review that's happening is by our utility companies. And then, you know, some of these decisions that we're making with larger projects like North High Street. So the second map shows the rest of town, a lot more neighborhoods in the southern part of the town. It's interesting. Suncrest, really, it's like seven different neighborhoods. We should break it all down. Anyhow, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page here. So regarding the strategy of paving. You may be confused that we are not paving a particular street that looks in really bad shape, right? There is a reason why we don't do the worst-first methodology anymore in general as professionals, right? If you're looking at things like asset management, some things are in a condition that would be considered already completely failed, right? And you may have a bunch of other assets that are well on their way to being failed, right? And that are accelerating, in fact, on their way to being failed. And so this graph is a depiction of kind of the lifecycle condition of roadways. They are built, and they exist, and they deteriorate slowly. And then they get to a point where they begin to deteriorate very quickly. And so pavement preservation is the concept that you, you know, if you are behind, right, on some deferred maintenance, and you have roadways that are failing, and some roadways which are about to really begin failing, that it may make sense to patch up those roads and get some of those roads in good condition before you really begin to tackle the roads that are totally failed, right? This is a concept that's very difficult for even people that are in the industry to grasp. So I really just want to hone in here that pavement reservation often requires work that may appear out of order. Okay, so, anyway, why do we do this? Again, right, to save money is the number-one thing. This is a graph that shows higher costs, right? If you are doing this reactive worst-first method, right? Basically, we have a limited amount of resources, and we need to make the best use out of them. We want to minimize traffic disruptions in general, right? So this helps us do this. We want to minimize air pollution. Want to minimize work zone dangers. We want to maximize our opportunities to change the street layouts, right? Whenever we do a preventive maintenance, say milling and filling a street, rather than completely rebuilding streets when they're failed, we get a chance to restripe it, right? Maybe achieve some of our other goals, do some traffic calming, right? Upgrade accessibility. Whenever we do something like milling and filling, we have to bring ADA curbs, curb ramps up to our better, best understanding of accessibility. Anyhow, Damian is going to talk about a specific project that we would like to discuss today. And that would be converting North High Street, basically doing one of those larger, major reconstructions. So Damian, thank you.
So, yeah, originally, originally, we were going to come to talk about North High Street, and it was billed as paving, so we hurried up and threw that together to talk about paving, too. But it does lead us into North High Street and, you know, dressing some of the worst. North High Street is a failing street. It's in significantly bad shape. And we're coming to this year to where we might have some unique opportunities to address it and be able to partner with, you know, MUB and WVU to help try to fix this street. One of the reasons we wanted to bring this street to you, too, is because, you know, I've been here for a long time, and it's always been my understanding, it's always been told to me by my predecessor that there was a moratorium on getting rid of brick streets. So we haven't really addressed any brick streets in a long time. We haven't done anything with them. And so, but we've done some digging and researching in there. We couldn't find anything that was actually written down saying, "Don't do brick streets." So, but we wanted, we still wanted to come and get your guys' thoughts and opinions on North High Street. You know, currently, you know, we have several issues with North High Street. There's the safety issues of, you know, students trying to cross that road, or, you know, cars going down that road where it's littered with potholes and tripping hazards. And it's, you know, it's a hot mess of, you know, waiting for someone to hurt themselves on it, which, you know, people, I think, frequently do. Other issues we have is we can't maintain this street both within the summertime or the wintertime. We can't take our sweepers up this street. We've damaged them trying to. We can't take our sweepers up this street, and we've damaged them trying to in the past. You know, it doesn't do a very good job collecting debris when we try to do it. And then snowplows, if you catch a, you catch that snowplow blade on that uneven, you know, you risk tearing that blade up really bad. So we don't do much winter maintenance. You know, this year, we didn't actually put any snowplows on any of our trucks, so it was kind of a weird winter. We just did, you know, salt. But, you know, we typically don't do anything on the street because it's a hazard to our equipment. And again, there's utility issues with this street as you drive up it, which I got here in a second, we'll do a quick drive up the street to look at it. You can see that the potholes where they're at, there are some underlying sewer issues that, you know, kind of repeat all the way up there. You see these patches right in line with MUB sewer line there. But also, WVU has a steam vault along Borman there that they, one of, they have some issues with the structural stability of that vault, and they want to redo that this year, which will, you know, entail tearing up a large part of that, the bottom portion of the brick road as well, to do that work. So, and then just the aesthetic of that street, it looks, it's gotta be the worst-looking street in the city. So just wanted to do a little quick drive up this street, you know, as you're, you know, looking at North High Street, which is, you know, it is kind of a center point to, you know, the campus, you know, you have, you know, the historic fraternity houses, which, you know, and they have their issues too. But, you know, so, you know, here's, right there's a manhole kind of in the center of the street. And as we go up, you'll see, you know, at that location up the street, you see these depressions, patches that we've had to fill. Going up the one side is just a large utility cut. Looks like it may have been a water line that was laid there in the past, and they did not redo the bricks. So you just have an asphalt patch all the way up there. And everywhere there's a, you know, utility crossing right there, you have an asphalt patch. See, right here, here's a regular sinkhole that, you know, we continually fill, fill with asphalt. And it just continues to get worse as you go up here, you know? This is, it's up at the top, it's more, it's more asphalt patch than it is brick, really. And so, as you can see, you know, we do want to preserve the historic nature of the brick streets in the neighborhoods, I think. You know, we have, I think, you know, Park Street, Wagner, Morris, I believe, and Ash. But this one is, is too far gone to try to preserve. And so with that, you know, we wanted to, you know, bring this to, you know, we wanted to make sure that if we do move forward this project, that council was, was good with this project. It would be included in our paving project. And again, that's one of the reasons why we're to draft paving projects, because, you know, along with other, with utilities that are reviewing the project right now for where they have, you know, if we include this in there, that'll move things around a little bit with cost.
One of the things I think that's important to communicate about this is, this project would not typically be something that we would ever even consider.
Yeah.
This was a pipe dream, for lack of a better term. And I gave a call to Jim Mirage, who is the Director of Roads and Grounds at WVU, and I said, hey, Jim, if WVU, I know you all would like us to take care of this road. You've asked me about it every year that you'd have the job, and you complain about it, and it's gonna be too expensive for me to do. But I'm standing on North High Street, and I figured if they could meet us halfway, or if they could contribute to the project somehow, that it would maybe make it more feasible for us to do. And I asked if his crews or somebody at WVU would be able to basically excavate that brick and palletize it and give it to us to use in other projects, like restoring other brick streets, or hopefully, if we get this EPA grant to do White Park, to actually help to stabilize some of the soil in some of the wet areas, right? So reclaiming this, this material and using it to meet some of our other goals. And WVU agreed. They actually have some issues with some of their capital funding right now, and have had to shift different things around, planning project for the summer, and we're trying to figure out what to do with certain crews. They have crews ready to go to demo this street for us, and we will supply them with millings, they're gonna put it back, and all we have to do with our contractor is direct them to lay new asphalt. So that is a massive savings for us. This project would never be achievable otherwise, and it probably will never be achievable otherwise, unless we get some massive grant to do in the future. This is basically a once-in-a-lifetime option, I think, for the city to do this. So that's all we have on our presentation. Would you have any questions for us?
Yeah.
Or is that against the rules?
Counselor Abubakar?
I have a question. Last year, you talked about a five-year rotation of the streets. Am I remembering this correctly?
No, it's ten years.
Yeah, similar with, with what we're looking at for the sidewalk plan, we're looking at a, we're working with, you know, our on-call consultants, we're working on a scope of work right now with them in cost to do our continuation of our five- and 10-year plan, to reevaluate the roadways.
With the roads, was it five or 10?
Ten years.
It was a 10-year plan, yeah.
So you had the list last year, is this not, is not the same listing, or did you all change the order of the repaving, or?
What?
This is, these are streets, we originally did one in 2017. We evaluated, did a 10-year plan.
The cycle.
The paving plan that had identified here's one through five, and then that said here's ones, and lumped them all together through five through 10, but the idea was to redo that asphalt pavement assessment, which is what they're...
Yep, but you're asking, you're saying, are we on a five-year cycle or a 10-year cycle?
I'm not, I'm not actually asking about the cycle. More specifically, I was asking about the order, because like I was looking on here, and there were streets that I had residents brought up to me asking about where they were in terms of the paving rotation. And I had told them to check out the website, because we had the paving plan demo last year. And so I was curious if that order no longer held up, if there'd be a new order, or...
So this list is developed through, it's influenced by that original plan. It's also, we get a lot of complaints, and like every year, we, you know, we have to delay certain streets because of utility concerns, and then our Public Works staff alerts us, and we have, you know, people in the neighborhoods really asking us to do a certain street. So it's always a mixture, but this is still influenced heavily by that plan.
By the one that's on the website.
And we are, like I said, we are working with our consultants to get a scope of work to update that plan, to reevaluate those roadways that we've done that are still in bad shape, and then reevaluate those.
Will you all update the online portion so that the residents can check to see where they are?
Yep. Yeah, once this list is finalized, once we get a complete list, it'll be put up on our website.
So since Counselor Abubakar started on the paving plan in general, let's stick with this. Is there any questions about this? And we'll get to North High Street after.
Deputy Mayor. So 19 miles, and we're gonna try to basically get half of this list, is that the goal?
Yeah.
A little more than half, probably 60%.
And what's the process to kind of finalize this list?
Right now, the utilities are reviewing it, gas, MUB, to see how that our paving list affects their, if they have any project that needs to be done. Because usually what happens is we do a project, and they come back and tear it up next year. So we want to try to avoid that. And so they're reviewing this list right now, saying, okay, these streets were good, please hold off on this street because we have a planned project. And so we're waiting for their comments back yet. And so once they do get their comments back, we'll look at those, say, okay, these streets can't be done because MUB needs to do stuff, and then we'll, and then we'll bring that back to council to say, this is our proposed plan.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Any other questions on this specifically? Just a comment, I completely understand what you're saying, Drew, but when people call me and I have to tell them, I'm sorry, your street's too far gone for us to make it a priority, that's not gonna fly very well, so I'm gonna give them your number.
I mean, the thing is, right, we have a network that we're maintaining, right? And if we can't effectively spend money, then the entire network deteriorates faster, right?
But you can tell them to not.
And, and so, you know, if they can't swallow that pill, then ultimately, every single roadway will be in the failed state, right? Because we will not be able to, you know, keep up any of them into good shape. That's, that's the worst-case scenario.
Like I said, everything you said makes sense.
Sure.
But I'm not sure people are going to accept that as an answer from me.
Sure.
May?
So I've appreciated what I perceive to be preventative maintenance, which looks like a lot of crack filling on certain roads. Also seen some paving where I sure as heck didn't think it should have been paved, but it got paved, but now it has kind of maintained, so we're all gonna learn through this process. At what point will the entire network be paved?
Um, so...
Like 10 to 15 years? Like for the person who's...
The entire network is already paved.
Wow.
So perhaps you might ask, at what point, probably the question that you are most interested in is, at what point will the condition of the streets?
Yes.
Be above a certain level?
Yes.
Right?
We'll feel that little bit better that we can all take
Right.
justified pride in.
Right now, we don't have a good enough answer. There's not really, we don't have enough of an understanding. Our last assessment was done in 2017. We haven't reassessed. That was the very first time that we assessed, so we don't actually know how we're performing and how the, what we're doing right now is sort of lasting. We think that we're getting better.
It looks better.
The general perception is that the roadways are getting better, right? But we, you know, we could be still on the slope of roadways are overall getting worse, right? I don't think we are, but, but we could be.
We are, with this list, though, if we, you know, we stick to, you know, 10 to 12 miles of roadway, from 2017, we will be at 60-plus percent of our roadway network being repaved since 17.
I mentioned, right, we're trying to get, and we are currently operating more on a 10-year paving cycle, if we do 10%, right? So...
That's great.
Yeah. That would certainly put our roadways in much better condition overall, probably. We do have word on the street is the worst weather conditions for roads in the entire country, the most freeze-thaw cycles of anywhere, so that's, yeah.
It's only done that three times this week. I don't know what you're referring to.
Right, so...
It's gonna be 70 degrees tomorrow.
Counselor Kwakwai.
I'm curious, with all the work that's been done on High Street, are we looking on Lower High? Are we looking to redo that? It's, are we working with the DOH in order to do something about downtown?
So the, the gas company's project in the downtown, they're gonna begin their next phase here in the next week or two to get that project moving. Again, they finished up for the winter. They are responsible to redo all those streets from, in their entirety, from curb to curb. So within the next, I think they said they had about two months left of work downtown, and then after that, they're responsible to repave all those streets entirely.
The gas company?
The gas company, yes.
And that's within the next two months or so?
Well, I think they're finishing up in the next two months, and then it'll be paving after that, so they'll be finished with all their underground work. They have, I think they have three streets that are city streets to deal with, and three streets that are DOH streets that are left to do. I, I'll, I have a map I'll send out.
But yes, you know, one of the conditions that we and the state imposed upon the gas company was that they had to completely repave everything after they were done.
And that goes with sidewalks too. The sidewalks where they busted out, they're responsible to redo those in a satisfactory manner.
And how does that work into both Pleasant and Walnut Street project?
We met with them, I met with the gas company two weeks ago, and I brought them up that we're gonna be doing those. And so we will be working with in conjunction, you know, to time those. They likely will be on Walnut Street before we get done, so we may have to make the decision, do we make them repave it, and then we come back and tear it up, or do we make them do a really good patch job until we come back and do our project? Pleasant Street will likely be going on at the same time, hopefully. And so likely, they'll do, we will still be in there doing construction on Pleasant Street when they're done with their work, and we'll probably repave that section.
Communication's been good, and cooperation's been appropriate?
Yes, yeah. Well, my staff has been meeting with them before they stop for the winter on a weekly, bi-weekly basis. Every, every other Wednesday night, they had a meeting out there on site and went over their progress. DOH, it was DOH's contractor and our staff out there. So they're, like I said, we just met with them two weeks ago, they let us know that they're gonna start their project back up in their proposed timeframe. And like I said, I'll send them, they gave me a map of what's still to be done, and I'll send that out.
Thank you. Moving on to High Street?
May? So if we're still on, if we're not on High Street, but we're on general comments, will there be some sidewalks built this year? Are there some, like in conjunction with streets? Because we're focusing on paving, I just was curious.
What's that?
I...
No. No, not on, on these streets, no.
Okay, and then...
Oh, so give me more money.
Pardon?
Give me money, I'll pay you some sidewalks.
Build you some.
Build you some sidewalks.
Good idea.
Yeah.
And then the streets, the six streets that are still being taken care of by the gas company, I know that right before Christmas, a few of the merchants on High Street were a little bit frustrated because there was a big surge in gas line replacement, which we all want, but anything that we can do to minimize the effect on merchants or people trying to do business or live on the streets would be super appreciated, so...
We were working with them to try to make it night work, and they were going too slow, so we let them do 24 hours a day, tried to get moving, and...
When some of the business owners are night, night business owners, so, so, you know, if like one side of the street could be for their parking in one side of the street, they were wondering if sometimes gas company employees could park in garages or something if they're parking there for like all shift, so that there was available parking on the street, or just whatever all you could do to minimize the effect on businesses, which is just sort of usually what you guys are trying to do anyway.
They are bringing revenue to parking, so they're paying for all those meters they're blocking.
But if, but if they're paying for public meters, those are the meters that are supposed to have frequent turnover for
There's a rate they pay for that.
For businesses that are right there. So even if they're paying for it, and paying for the frequent turnover or whatever, it still means that the
It's not available.
Purpose is to keep the businesses open. And one of them was talking about significant decrease in, in revenue right before Christmas, which was frustrating, so...
That was something we heard at a Main Street meeting, right?
Actually, I was late to a meeting because I stopped on the street to talk about it, but we did talk about it then at a subsequent meeting, but yeah. Just, just trying to make sure that we're thinking about all the angles.
I think we're supposed to have another meeting before they, the day before they start up and...
Yeah, and just, yeah, if they weren't, if they're not essential vehicles for what they're doing, if they could plan to park in the, in the garages, that'd be great, like at night. North High Street, Counselor Kwakwai, you had some comments?
Curiosity, your intention is to reclaim those bricks?
Yes, as much as we can. I mean, there will be some loss during demolition, but the money that we can save, we're gonna try to save.
I'm curious, where are you gonna store them?
Garage, city garage. We have...
That seems significant.
Well, it's not too bad. When you start palletizing, I mean, there's gonna be probably a significant loss, but I mean, I'd say we'll probably retain 50% of the bricks, and we'll palletize them, store them out there.
Is that the same brick that we would find on the other streets in Morgantown?
Some, yes.
It's a slightly different color.
Yeah, there's some with red, some with, yeah. If they, you know, they do use them in White Park, we'll then have a yellow brick road through White Park.
I seem to recall, nostalgia, excuse me, I don't mean to walk you down that lane, but I do seem to recall that brick were manufactured in Morgantown
Yeah, Morgantown Fairmont.
With the word Morgantown printed on them. And I'm curious to know if that's something manufactured here, and again, something that might be used to...
Yeah, I bet if you, we do sort of, we'll see Morgantown or Fairmont on those bricks. Cause that's what you see a lot.
Okay. New funding strategy, we're gonna sell the bricks.
Probably could.
One by one, ten dollars apiece.
But we will, yeah, we will retain-
Get your High Street bricks.
Get a new sidewalk.
The front boys would love to buy them.
All right.
Any other questions or concerns about North High Street and removing the brick street aspect? I don't think anyone is going to, I'm all for preserving the historic nature of some of those neighborhood streets. I don't think anyone's gonna look at this and say, isn't this great? We have to preserve that. It's already-
Gone.
It's too far gone.
Bad issues. I don't know if y'all have driven through it, but wow, it's a ride.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, you get going and-
Well, and it's really great to work with WVU and MUB at the same time and get a collective win, a project that we're all invested in and we can make happen and collaborate.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
All right, if there are no other questions for Damian or Drew, well, May?
Traffic calming?
On this?
We are looking at something.
Or where?
Just on this.
So, yes.
Because the bricks were the traffic calming. So now, it'd be a strange shot, well, not on purpose, but they'd have that effect.
We are gonna be looking at potentially, you know, some bump outs or maybe something with the intersection on Prospect.
Just ways to slow it.
And also this intersection with Maiden right here. Right now, North High Street, as you can see, is just a single plane, right? And often in very steep streets where you have an intersecting street that is flat, right? You might see that sort of plane interrupted, right? We could very easily do that and I would prefer to do that. And that would be natural traffic calming for the, the traffic that's going down. That is a, sort of a, a, a common crossing for bicycles and pedestrians. There, there's a trail kind of on the other side of the Morgan House. So, yeah, we're looking at, at, at that to ensure that it doesn't become a speedway.
At the very top of North High, there's that, um, turn off into the gravel. Yeah, you can't, it's like right up past there, yeah. Are, are they planning to pave that or any, it's probably private.
It is, it's part of the Times-South High House.
Yeah.
Actually, it is a public right of way through there and then it turns into the Sigma Chi's parking lot in the back. Uh, it's part of, it's a, I think it's a continuation of, what is that, Gil?
We intend to pave the entire right of way.
Okay.
Yeah.
Even through there, okay. Yeah, cause I know it gets like narrow up there and then, okay.
It goes into a set of steps?
Yeah, I know, yeah, the little steps that go up, which is nice, but-
We don't intend to pave the steps.
Yeah.
I know it gets washed out with all that gravel and stuff there. I just wondered if there was intent to pave that, so, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you all.
Give them a moment to gather things. Our second presentation of the evening is the City of Morgantown Fiscal Year 2023 to 2024 Budget Presentation. We have Finance Director Kevin Tennant with us.
Thank you. Uh, I handed out some graphs, uh, at the beginning. If someone doesn't have a set, let me know and I will get you a set. Uh, this is kind of a supplement to the executive summary that was already included in the book and some of the budget numbers. Uh, just thought maybe a, a visual might be better than me spouting out a bunch of numbers at you. First, I want to really show my appreciation for, for Lori and, and Sam and then Courtney as well. Uh, this was our first year for our new budget software, uh, which is Open Gov. So even before last year's budget was finalized, we were starting the build and implementation of, of the new software. So it's been a busy, hectic few months, uh, year really, uh, for, for finance, excuse me, for finance. So really, really thank them. Excuse me. Uh, we started this process, uh, for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget back on November seventh. Uh, we sent out the packets, uh, both the CIP and operating to the department heads. Uh, we've had three different sets of meetings in December, January and February with finance, administration and the department heads to go through all of these numbers, time and time again, slashing here and there and then presenting the final numbers, uh, to the department heads. And I'm sure you all have noticed that a significant number of department heads have, have showed up tonight. Uh, and that is if you have any questions directly relating to their department, they probably can fill those a lot better than finance can. Your budget book contains several different budgets for various funds. General Fund, Cole Severance, uh, the Three Arts and Culture Airport, Capital Escrow. My brief presentation will deal mainly with General Fund and Capital Escrow, simply because they are the largest and, and deal with the, the most money. The first graph that you have is the total General Fund budget of approximately forty-three million dollars. That is up less than one percent than the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. So we are being fairly consistent, uh, various reasons involved, but, uh, the, the forty-three million is what we are proposing to you all. And revenues, uh, the city manager mentioned that revenues are flattening out a little bit and, and we are seeing that some. I mean, they're, they're strong in most instances. They are exceeding budgets this current year. But some of the graphs later on, you'll, you'll see, uh, some of the, the flattening of, of our revenues. Uh, but for revenues included in the budget is a five million dollar carryover. That number is based upon our, our current projection for inflows and outflows and monitoring of our cash. Uh, I believe that five million dollars is a conservative estimate. We are maintaining a, a pretty good level of, of cash and with revenues being slightly above budget in most instances, I think our carryover will be a little bit more than that coming to the end of the year. BNO taxes, uh, which is your second graph. Uh, the blue line is what we term regular, uh, BNO. Uh, and you can see that has remained pretty, pretty flat. Pre-COVID levels in, in, uh, two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty was thirteen point nine, thirteen point nine, dipped a little bit and now for twenty-four, we're back up to thirteen point nine again. Uh, actually, I think that will be a little light. Uh, I looked at some revenue numbers, uh, today. Uh, we actually may come in for this current fiscal year at about fourteen point two. That is where we're currently projecting, which could be an all-time high. I'm not sure BNOs have, have ever been much above fourteen before. Uh, BNO makes up about thirty-three percent of our General Fund budget. Uh, so it is a, a significant piece. And then the orange line that you see, that is our BNO construction. And you've heard me whine and complain about it enough, uh, over the last several months. It is just, it's bottom, bottom, excuse me, bottoming out. Uh, we're projecting about five hundred thousand dollars for this coming year. Uh, and that is going to affect the number of projects that we will be able to fund in Capital Escrow. Now, one bright side, uh, the one point two million dollars that we have budgeted in this current fiscal year, I believe we're going to exceed that as well. So we may have some additional amounts that we can carry over into projects next year. Sales tax, uh, the next table is a, a picture of sales tax since inception. A budget versus what we've actually received. And you can see, first year when we started receiving, uh, sales tax was fiscal year twenty-one, we received three quarters that year. Uh, we budgeted three million, three seventy-five. We received, uh, four point five, uh, excuse me, five point four million dollars. Next year, budgeted six, received nine point five, twenty-three. We've budgeted eight point eight. Uh, more than likely, we are going to come out in the nine-five to, to nine-six range. Uh, so sales tax has been, uh, better than expected. Uh, it has flattened out over the last few quarters. But again, it's, it's really been a benefit to the city. And now below the blue line, uh, you'll see how the, uh, sales tax money is allocated. Uh, twenty-five percent to the Retirement Fund for Police and Fire, twenty-five percent to Capital Escrow, twenty-five percent to Boe Park. And then we've been sending twenty-five percent over to the General Fund. What we have been doing is just at the end of the year, we'll send what was budgeted over to the General Fund, not actually what was received. We've been trying to use it as a savings account. Uh, if we actually send the money order over to the General Fund, city manager and assistant city manager finds ways to spend it. So we are keeping a little bit of a slush fund in, in the sales tax. So what we're suggesting this year, uh, we're budgeting a, a total of nine point five, six million dollars in sales tax for the upcoming year. Next graph, uh, is your Hotel Motel and Wine and Liquor. Uh, we're budgeting one point one million, uh, for Hotel Motel or occupancy tax and eight hundred and thirty-three, excuse me, eight hundred and thirty for, uh, wine and liquor. I, I included this graph in here just to show you how we have recovered from the, from the pandemic. Uh, we're, we're back above in most instances where we were prior to. The next graph, uh, my staff didn't particularly like, but I included it anyways. The total height of the bar is the total revenue for the municipal service fees. Uh, or I think it's sometime called the Safe Streets and Safe Community Municipal Fee. Uh, we term it MSF for short. Uh, you can see in nineteen and twenty, we were up at the four point five million range for fiscal, or for the upcoming budget year twenty-four, we're budgeting four point one million. Uh, we took a dip there with people working from home. And I still, uh, there, there's a lot of businesses that, that had people working from home. So I don't know if we'll ever get back up to that four point five million. Uh, but, but four point one is a strong number. Uh, and then the different colors within the bars are how those monies are spent, whether it is, uh, police salaries, street salaries, uh, paving projects and then some other equipment that gets sent over to Capital Escrow. Next graph is just property taxes and fire fees. Uh, four point six million and four point one million. Uh, you can see by the graph, those numbers don't particularly change a lot. Uh, there was an increase in fiscal year twenty-one, which is, is the reason for the increase. But after that, it just, uh, stays pretty level. We do not have the final numbers yet from the state for property taxes. Uh, if we get those in the next day or two, I will go ahead and incorporate that for the first reading. Uh, but if not, uh, it'll be probably similar to last year where there'll be a change between the first reading and the second reading. Uh, but that, those should be coming any day.
Assessments, are they gonna be doing some reassessments or?
That I am unsure, sir.
Don't know?
No.
I'm wondering if that was the increase, that represented some of the increase there?
It, it's possible. I, I don't know the answer. That they, the information that we get when we receive property tax money is very limited.
Okay.
Uh, and then graph six is just some of our other revenues. Again, just showing you, uh, what we're budgeting for the upcoming year and how flat, uh, most of those have been. Uh, the only one that has any kind of significant increase is garbage collections, which doesn't mean anything. We turn around and send the money, uh, back out. On the expense side of things, um, first deal with some personnel items. You're all familiar with the, uh, study completed by Gov HR. The, uh, that new comp plan was adopted July first of this, uh, fiscal year. Uh, so this next July first will be the first full year and everyone has been budgeted, although I think there are some, uh, stipulations tied to, uh, performance. But the budget includes a one-step increase, uh, for the employees across the board. Uh, and that will amount to a point eight-two percent increase. Uh, it varies depending on what grade you're in, how much of a step increase is. Uh, we've included a two percent cost of living adjustment in the budget. That amounts to about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in salaries, taxes and pension. I believe city manager and assistant city manager surveyed some local municipalities just to see what everybody else was doing. And I think most was in that two to three percent, uh, range. Uh, health insurance costs, uh, are increasing just slightly. Uh, claims are trending up ever so slightly, not much. Uh, we get that data from our third-party administrator, Benefit Assistance Corp. Uh, but the main cause of the increase was, uh, from the premiums of our stop-loss insurance. Uh, it went up six percent, which, uh, is roughly fifty-three thousand dollars. However, we did elect not to pass any of those costs on to employees. Their premiums that they pay for health, dental and vision remain the same for this calendar year that we're in. Uh, pensions, uh, the fire and police pensions. Uh, the alternative plan that was elected for, for these pensions requires a seven percent increase each year. Uh, so the budget for, uh, police and fire is one point four million and then one million, one hundred and seventeen respectively. Uh, and there is also additional money in the sales tax fund each year to, uh, fund additional amounts to those. The non-civil pension contribution is budgeted at twenty-one point six-six percent of salaries. Uh, and that is from the latest actuarial, uh, report that we've received. Uh, that is up from twenty point nine-five percent from the prior year. Uh, new positions, uh, there are two new, uh, salary positions, uh, in the General Fund. A Neighborhood Services Coordinator in Planning and an IT Specialist. During the pandemic, uh, there was a position eliminated from the IT Department. Uh, we're adding it back in to get them back up to, uh, full staff, uh, prior to COVID. Um, there is in contract labor, uh, or contract services for the Police Department, an amount for the operations of, uh, the new training center. Uh, when we were completing this, we were unsure, uh, what this position would look like, if it would be contract or if it would be employee. Uh, it's appearing more like it'll be an employee. So at some point in time, we will have to do an adjustment to, to move it out of contract services up to, uh, wages and salaries and, um, some of the taxes and pensions that goes along with that. Uh, the Arts and Culture Fund, uh, is also adding one new position, uh, a Box Office Manager. And this coming year, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, will be the second year where several positions within the city are funded by ARPA. Uh, the Marketing Manager, uh, the Ambassadors and the Street Outreach Coordinator. All of those are paid from the General Fund, but we'll receive reimbursement from the ARPA Fund. There is five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in the General Fund for debt service for the upcoming year. Uh, one bit of good news, the Energy Saving Bonds, there are three semi-annual payments left on that. So we'll have next year two payments and then one payment in the following year and then those will be finished. Uh, other, um, debt that is being paid out of the General Fund is the Spruce Street, four thirty St. Street Building and the North Side Fire Station. Uh, contributions out of the General Fund, uh, we're budgeting five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Convention and Visitors Bureau, uh, and that is one half of the occupancy tax. Uh, nineteen thousand to Region Six and thirty thousand to the MPO. Uh, that does include the second half of the city's portion of the Tier One Traffic Study. That does include the second half of the city's portion of the Tier 1 traffic study. Transfers to other funds and component units of the city. From the general fund, Bow Park is budgeted to receive $1,930,000. $230,000 of that is from the occupancy tax, their share, and then additional $1.7 million for operations. Met, $104,000. Again, they receive a small chunk of the occupancy tax. Arts and Culture, $502,000. I believe that is up about $70,000 from last year due to the new position that they are asking for. Capital Escrow, $4.1 million. Airport, $150,000. Library, $900,000. And Mountain Line Transit Authority, $356,500. Now, that's still left enough to budget approximately $1 million in contingency for the upcoming year. And then if you would look one graph over, you'll see a graph of a breakdown of your personnel operational costs by year. Okay, on to the Capital Escrow. We are budgeting a little over $7.5 million in Capital Escrow. That is down about a million from prior year. And it includes a $300,000 contingency and $617,000 in agency requests. One page over, you will find a list of the requests that we received and our proposed funding of those. Funding sources for Capital Escrow, I've touched on a lot of them. MSF, BNO Construction, sales tax. There is a $500,000 grant from the HRM Trust and $45,000 in interest and then an additional $1.2 million from the general fund to help pay for these projects. Some of the projects that are included is a first-year of rebranding project by the communications department. $2.1 million for street right-of-way improvements and equipment. $220,000 for police equipment. Both of those come from the MSF funds. $781,000 for the runway extension. $785,000 for the park and met. $450,000, which is a riverscape. $100,000 for roof replacement at the amphitheater. $150 required in the maintenance sinking fund. And $85,000 for curtain replacement at the met. In your five-year plan, you will see a grant for $6 million, which is going to be used for the South High Street replacement or renovations. That is not included in the Capital Escrow budget. That will be accounted for in a special revenue fund. So it is not part of your Capital Escrow. It is part of the project, five-year project plan. But you won't see it in case you're looking at the numbers and they don't jive. Finally, the next steps going forward from here. Unfortunately, you all will be seeing a lot of me over the next month and a half. Next Tuesday, March 7th, I will be here again for the first reading of the general fund and coal severance budgets. And again, sometime in the next few days, next week, we'll be getting the final tax revenue numbers from the state. Then the second reading will be March 21st. And on that date, that will be the general fund and coal severance, but I'll also try to bring resolutions for the Capital Escrow, airport, met, and the arts and culture funds. The week of the 20th and the 27th, we were required to file the state forms in the Dominion Post. So there'll be two filings of those. And then March 23rd, I will submit, after you all's approval, the state forms to the auditor's office. April 18th is the official lay the levy date. Then 4/23, I will submit the levy order and rate sheet to the state auditor's office. And then come July, we start all over again with the first revision and carry-forward calculations. The only other thing I have left, I try to keep you apprised of, is the balance in the financial stabilization fund. We were able to fund another, an additional $500,000 this past year. Our current balance as of today is $6,525,174 in our rainy day fund, which is about 15% of our general fund budget for next year.
Thank you. Is there anyone that has any specific questions for the finance director? This is on an item for discussion, but...
This is a good moment.
Yeah. If there's questions for Kevin, we should ask them now. And as a reminder, there is another drop-in budget session with the finance department and administration for council later this week.
It's a lot to digest.
It's a lot of numbers. I do apologize. There's no way to make it exciting.
And I appreciate that you all are holding those sessions. I find it much easier to sit and ask specific questions, kind of one-on-one, as opposed to digging down and having a back-and-forth, back-and-forth here, so.
Did we move that to three to five?
Yes, three to five.
On Thursday?
On Thursday.
Thursday, yes.
I'm hoping you got it.
I don't think there's any questions for you right now. I think you're getting up pretty easy tonight.
No questions for all the directors here? They came? You want to ask any questions to them?
Any questions for any specific departments?
Do we hear any complaints?
Okay.
I would just say that all of the people who are here and what they represent are very important to us. And we're just digesting this and figuring out how it looks to us. But from the different projects that each of you represent, they're very important and appreciate all of your work.
I have several specific questions, but I think our session on Thursday is probably best suited for that. I thank you for presenting today.
Assistant manager.
That'd be great.
Not to put them on the spot.
Yeah. Is there any specific department head who would like to discuss in the absence of questions? Not all at once, no. Well, we appreciate everyone coming just the same. All right.
I think I have one other comment. I know that many of you who our department has worked on it, so we have a certain amount, as you can see in the budget, and it's pretty flat. So anything we can do to work with you to generate more funds through earmarks, grants, any other kinds of enhancements that we can come up with, please let us know what we can do to help with letters of support or any other assistance. And most of that will come from administration. But as you can see in the future years, those are the things that are going to be important to make sure that we fulfill all of our many varied extensive goals, including runway extensions, new fire station, and planning and recreation, the whole bit. So, and sidewalks, lots of sidewalks. So, thank you all.
All right. Seeing no other questions or discussion, we will move on to item number two on our agenda, the public portion. Is there any member of the public wishing to speak? I don't, I look out and I see a lot of employees. I don't see a lot of public.
They're all so public.
They can address us as public. They didn't even need so. They want to go home. They've been working all day. All right.
Thank you all for being here.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
And all the work you do.
Seeing no one wishing to speak during the public portion, we'll move on to items for discussion. Item A, an ordinance amending membership requirements for the Urban Landscape Commission. Manager Haas?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I, we've discussed this in previous meetings. It is proposed that we restructure the landscape commission to include five members.
Echo going on.
Yeah.
Or reverb.
Major.
Okay.
There we go.
To include five members that are appointed by city council, a, the city manager and the director of Bow Park, or their designated will serve as ad hoc members of that committee. That's the proposed structure, and that's what's being requested tonight.
This is essentially changing a residency requirement and adding residency or working inside the city, right?
It, maybe the mayor, our city attorney can answer that. It's not in the ordinance itself that I can see.
That is correct.
And that makes a lot of sense. We have a lot of people who work inside the city and have, like at WVU per se, that have a lot of expertise that would be useful. And I think we've done this with some other commissions. So are there any questions, comments, concerns, or just move this item to the agenda?
Good idea. Move this item to the agenda.
Yep.
Move forward. Item B, an ordinance amending section 365.12 of City Code describing gate and pool ticket violations in parking facilities.
We've had some issues with the parking authority in terms of the enforcement or the ability to enforce individuals that somehow sidestep gates or barriers that are placed. And this simply clarifies that and gives them the authority to be able to cycle individuals. It makes it less easy for them to weasel out of those fines.
There currently is not something like that in place.
That's right. It just clarifies it and makes it easier for them to be able to enforce. Anything else?
I think that covers it. I'd be happy to answer questions if you like. Parking Authority Director Dana McKenzie has requested this to address those issues and was prepared to be here tonight to describe the need for the ordinance to council, but unfortunately was unable to attend. He can appear at another meeting if council would like, and I do have some information from him about it if council has any more detailed questions.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
This is just to clarify language so that they can enforce correctly.
That's correct. The language before said, "You may not lift the gate for the purpose of exiting without pain." And so the language now is broader to say, "You may not exit without paying."
Yeah. Can't drive around it too.
That's correct.
Can't go around it.
Which, to be fair, people already knew was wrong, but...
The big thing coming down.
If the law doesn't say it.
It was certainly a violation of the spirit of the law.
So just a general consensus to move to the agenda then. Does anyone have a specific request for Director McKenzie to come to a meeting? Or can we let him off the hook or?
Let's have him come just so he can describe it at the next meeting.
Okay. Sorry, I'm making notes for the clerk.
Just to one, just to one meeting.
Okay. Item C, an ordinance amending City Code, section 105.09, providing for election rooms and booths.
Our city clerk had, and we were part of that whole discussion, but...
Your microphone does not like you to see.
Maybe that'll work. The city clerk had some real difficulty in one of our precincts being able to locate a polling place. And this basically allows for the consolidation of a side if it promotes voter safety as well as efficiency in the administration of elections. It also talks about that in the event that this happens, the city clerk will provide affected voters with any notice required by law so that all of our voters are aware of any changes that we make in voting places.
Attorney Simonson, do you have anything to add?
No, I think that's a very good description. I'd be happy to answer any questions if council has them.
It was my understanding that we have one voting location that would essentially end up with only five voters voting there. And that would have taken place at the WVU farm. And the Secretary of State had some concerns about securing those voters' privacy and things like that. So this was a necessary item. Does anyone have any concerns about that or questions for the attorney or the manager?
Good common sense.
If you're the only one that casts a vote in that location, people are going to know it was you, right? So just general consensus to move that to our next agenda. And the clerk would be here for that one to give any additional explanation. Our last item for discussion, the City of Morgantown fiscal year 23, 24 budget.
I would say we're going to need to move it to the agenda. I think that we're still having workshops. And individuals who can't happen to attend workshops are welcome to call in questions or schedule additional meetings, or the clerk would be glad, or actually Carol's been scheduling additional meetings. So we can, we can keep doing that to make sure that everyone gets their questions answered.
So, general, move it to the agenda as we are required to do.
Yep.
Great.
For sure.
That's our last item. Does anyone have anything for the good of council that they wish to bring up at this time? No?
Move to adjourn? Second?
All right. We're adjourned. Thank you.